I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the great justice for all.
If we could have roll right now?
Yes.
Rosa?
Yes.
We're good.
Here.
Mark?
Here.
White?
Here.
And Mel?
Here.
Yeah.
Here. Okay, at this time, we will open it up for any limited public comment. We'll open that at 7:01. I think we're gonna close it at about 7:01 and a half. Okay. The Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda unless there's any discussion as to items on the agenda. We don't have agendas for -- we'll pass this down. There's not really much of an agenda because it's just master plan work.
I'll make a motion to be approved of the agenda.
Let's let someone read it and then we'll get a support. Did you put an agenda in your mind?
I can just read it. A is limited public comment. B, approval of agenda. Three. C is inquiry as to conflicts of interest. D, correspondence. E, new business. One, master plan narrative review. Two, future land use map review. Three, overview of the five-year park senior agenda.
Did you play it back? We have a motion on the table if anyone would like to support that.
Second.
We have support from. If there's no discussion, we'll call for all in favor of the approval agenda as presented. Say aye.
Aye.
I'll close, same sign. I seem to not have my agenda now, so we're inquiring as to conflicts of interest. Does anybody have any conflict of interest on any agenda item today? Seeing none. We have no correspondence, I believe, as of now for today, so we'll move right into new business, which is the bulk of this meeting and the reason we're here for this special meeting is the master plan. So Mr. Ike Vangeli is going to take it away.
We could have a very short meeting. All you have to do is approve and adapt it and move it on. I sent out a draft on -- we sent a draft out on Friday, one with and one without graphics because of the size, and then we -- they were posted on the project website along with the current copy of the draft Parks and Recreation Plan. Wanted to make sure the Planning Commission had a copy of that to take a look at it. Where we're at on the master plan, what you have in the narrative, which is noted on the bottom as Draft 930, 2013, is takes the planning commission all the way up to the future land use map, which is an agenda item that I wanted to talk to you about before we actually spend time revising it. The way the master plan narrative is set up, I'm kind of glad that Nikki made copies of the parks plan because what we did is we intentionally just gave you the narrative part and we attached the graphics. We didn't want to go through the actual preparation of the document. The master plan will look very similar to this, but this is more of an intense graphic program and it's even a little bit bulkier to send over the email, so I wanted to -- I really wanted you to read the narrative. The narrative includes -- and the other part of this that I'm trying to do is, as I kicked off this process about six months ago, I think the master plan needs to be a document that somebody can pick up and read within about a half an hour, 40 minutes at the most. And it should clearly articulate where the township wants to go relative to its principles and framework. Have the future land use map and have action and implementation. I don't like overwhelming the master plan with a lot of data and information that just makes it bulkier to review. We can provide all that as an appendices and put that on the project website, okay? So there's like reams of statistical data that sometimes you find in a master plan that, you know, I'd prefer summarizing it in a dashboard that you've already received. We've talked about, in the plan, we summarize the data for you, the information from the census, and then we've also incorporated in here the cornerstones that the Planning Commission has reviewed twice and commented on, and they're included in here as well now. And then there's a section in the plan that talks about, it's a section, we term, community assets worth enhancing, which are some of the key things that really I wanted to talk to you tonight that should be incorporated into the master plan in terms of where the community wants to go in the future. And then I'd like to review those with you and I'd like to open it up for discussion with the planning. If you turn to page 21 of the document, this is the section that starts after the cornerstones, which you've already reviewed previously. We've got a few things in here that we wanted to talk, we wanted to kind of shine a light on relative to their incorporation in the master plan. We refer to those as community assets worth enhancing. The first one is the park system along US 31 in terms of, we think that because of the expenditure that's been made by all of the parks involved and the fact that there's been planning going on with the Parks Advisory Committee, is that the park system should appear fairly prominent in the new lanes and the new master plan as a community asset because of the ability not only to provide recreation services to the community, but the opportunity that it provides to the business district and the potential for economic development, okay, in the community. Those are all noted. Nikki and I, and it's consistent, and they're outlined in the placemaking study, plus the Parks Advisory Board has undergone some additional master planning for the parks, and it's incorporated in the five-year recreation plan. The second one, which I think is very important and actually kind of almost a, the Achilles' heel of the township is public water. Unless there's a reliable source of potable water, which is public water, that's provided to the commercial areas in the community, especially along the 72 and the US 31 corridor, we're not going to be able to, we're not going to, the township is not going to see any large commercial growth whatsoever. And I'm not talking large in the way of big boxes, I'm talking about retail growth as big as the Goodwill because Goodwill was, Mesa really had to look at coding their codes in order to allow it, and the word that we got back was, this is going to be kind of the last one that goes through that type of an analysis. We really need, Mesa is part of the master plan, part of the regional meeting with all of the agencies, they were the first ones to get up and voice their recommendations for the master plan. They said that the township needs to have a reliable source of water in order to meet the current fire codes for sprinklers, having the commercial facilities with adequate sprinkler systems. Otherwise, they're gonna, the buildings, the property owners are going to have to do what like the Holiday Inn Express has where one part of the building, two or three stories tall, is actually a large system that is there to fight fires and with, to meet the sprinkler requirements, which is very costly to those businesses and property. So we noted in here that the Traverse City Town Center has an agreement with the tribe in order to provide water and kind of suggesting that because of this arrangement, maybe the township needs to pursue that action as well and have a similar situation where they have the tribe potentially provide water to the business district so the township doesn't get into the operation and maintenance and management of the water system. Third one that we think that's important is connecting the Grand Traverse Town Center with Acme Village, and that would connect both pieces of property, the property, so there would be a connection with Mount Hope with the GTTC property. That was advanced in the placemaking plan. The Planning Commission is part of the special use approval for the village of Grand Traverse, now known as GTTC, actually has, and the developers have provided, executed cross-access easements to allow that connections to occur. With that connection in place in the future, that would basically set up a county arterial pro collector within, between the properties. It would take some of the traffic off of 72 and provide better easy access between all of these developments and these neighborhoods. So we think that's important. The other part of this is, the fourth one down is public facilities. We know that in discussions with the Township Administration that Mesa is looking at alternative sites for a new fire department, and obviously, if anybody really has worked here in this building, there's a need to have a new Township Hall that has offices that can provide modern office space to Township administrative staff, facilities, conference rooms that are somewhat private because there's really nothing in this building where you can have a private conversation, and just have better meeting facilities to accommodate the requirements for public meetings, okay, in case you want to televise the meetings in the future, et cetera. So we think that there's maybe an opportunity for new public facilities. Next one in the list on page 22 is agricultural preservation and expansion, and this gets at the area of the use of the PDR program, which has been pretty successful based on meetings that we've had with the farming and the agricultural community. We know that PDR eligibility actually exceeds the amount of funding available, so people are interested in the PDRs, there's just not enough funds coming in. So that should be continued in the future. And then we also mentioned that the Township has adopted ag tourism ordinance, but there's some other outcomes that are needed relative to ag-related businesses, and that's part of the conversation that's being held with an ag committee that's working and taking a look at possible zoning revisions. So we think that's worth pursuing as part of the master plan. Next is, and last one, is the utilization of form-based code. This is going to be, you guys got a copy of it. It was supposed to be robed to the zoning committee for their review, but Nikki had also sent you guys a copy of the form-based code, so I don't know if you opened it up and took a look at it, but they've been working on it now for about four months, and this would go in place of some of the business districts. And it really sets up the opportunities to have a lot of the subdivisions in the retail areas connected. It creates public space standards for sidewalks and walkability, and it actually provides some, it also provides benefit to the commercial uses because it allows businesses to share parking and it reduces the ratio of parking per square foot to more modern standards. So it would be the use of utilization of form-based codes. The last part of this, which is, we wanted to put a blurb in here because it's consistent with some of the regional thinking, is that the Township has been designated as a growth and investment area out of the grand vision, and there's only, there's about four of them that have been identified in the region, and this area is one of them. And we really think that the Township needs to leverage that designation relative to how it's going to grow in a very compact manner, and that's kind of in the future land use plan. Areas that are designated as town center and as adjacent urban residential neighborhoods where they would be compact, they would be in the southern part of the township, and they would have, in the future, they would have access to utilities. All that has sanitary now, in the future, these areas would have opportunities for public water. And without the combination of sewer and water within these defined areas, you're really not going to have the investment that's been identified for this part of the county. So that's a need. Without it, it's going to inhibit, it's going to inhibit the investment. So those are some of the key areas that you haven't seen. You worked on the cornerstone, then the front part is the existing assessment of businesses and demographics and housing stock and all those issues. What will be coming out of our discussion this evening is a modified future land use map, a zone plan, the action strategy that we've put together for the Parks and Rec plan that Marcy and her group saw last week. So with that, I'll open it up for Madam Chairman for questions.
I will do the same thing. Anybody have any theory, question?
Talking about cornerstones.
Do you have page under?
Oh, I'm sorry. Did it start on page 15? I'm commenting on it more or less 16 and beyond. It's the general use of the, use of itemizing without a leading to the itemization, and I'm just wondering. So you have the cornerstones, and then it just starts saying, one, two, three, four, five, starts bulletizing items.
Yeah.
Is there something that is to lead the reader into what those are?
Yeah, it's going to be, they'll be, it's a part of the graphics, they'll be, that's the building blocks.
Okay.
So they'll be at this, yeah, they're going to have, the cornerstone is the, is the paragraph narrative in the itemizer, the building blocks that attach to that.
Okay.
So in the graphic report, you'll see the building blocks show up.
Okay.
I have a question, kind of align the same lines, because I live here and sometimes I was getting bogged down by the abbreviations and remember, because they're all so similar. They all are like GT something, something, something.
I know, I know, I know. You've got a lot of GTs here.
I mean, is it really going to be the end of the world? And it's not consistent. Sometimes they're abbreviated and sometimes they're not, so.
And want them all open?
I kind of, but I would be open to other people's. How much longer is it really going to take?
Not much.
And it just makes it so much easier to pay attention to, I think. Because I was like, there's one spot I get really confused. It's like talking about the GTTC. It's in that section we were just in. On the second paragraph of page 21, it's talking about Grand Traverse Town Center, and then it says can provide the downtown, and then it has town center in parentheses that was envisioned in the previous master plan. So is that Acme Village, the town center is actually, or the town center is?
The town center is that light blue on the future land use map right there. Right here.
Okay.
This is the town center that's in there.
Okay. Well, I, I mean, I was so confused.
Okay, I'll open them up.
Clarity would help me. Can we even have things that change names?
Yeah, like GT.
GT is GTTC. So I guess.
Great.
Any other comments on this?
I just want to make sure in the park section that the park plan will be updated.
It will be. Whatever's going to be in the park plan will get integrated into this one.
Is that the action item that you gave?
No, that's.
No, it's the actual, I guess, master plan. Anyone else have thoughts, concerns?
Do you guys agree with the community assets that are worth leveraging? And I talked about public facilities and the use of public water, you know, fold out, you know, leveraging your park system, those type of things that I talked about? Because those are, master plans today are less about land use allocation, they're more about specific community strategies. I know, who's going to Citizen Planner? John, you're going, and Beth, are you going?
Not this round.
Not this round, okay. Because in Citizen Planner, they're probably going to talk about master plans relative to state statute in terms of all the various components, and land use is a big component of that. But a lot of that's changing also because a lot of communities are built out, and land use is less of a concern, it's redevelopment and development areas are more of a concern, or how master plans, some master plans move in that direction. I think here, actually, when I talk to you about your future land use map, I'm recommending, not recommending many changes to it because everything is highly balanced between the future land use map and your PDR eligibility map, which is this one here, that if I make many changes on that, it's going to change the PDR eligibility, and I don't want to do that. But it's really less about land use allocation, it's more about some strategic issues that the community needs to take a look at in the future that kind of came out of the survey that we did, and it's going to be apparent once, once the Meyer project starts implementation and there are other retailers and businesses that want to locate in the community as part of that project, okay, then that's where the utilities, the public utilities are going to start kicking in. So, you know, there's a few things that I think that the Township needs to position itself for in the next few years in order to really capitalize on that momentum. The other part of it is, is the utilities should be within a defined area, and the defined area would be in this part of the Township right here, where you have the public water, okay? Then that area in here then becomes your growth and investment strategy because that can accommodate the commercial and the office development, the residential development. You can't have compact, higher density housing without having access to public water, okay, to a degree. Because again, you start building multiple family, the fire department's going to start wanting integration firefighting technology, you can have like sprinklers and whatnot, stand pipes and things along those lines that would be costly to do without a public water system. Some of the residential codes are going to change too, and some houses are going to require sprinklers.
Wow.
Some of the larger homes are going to require sprinkler systems.
I have a question about the, are we talking, the assets?
The what?
The community assets worth enhancing, the waiver. I feel like the road issue came up a lot in the survey, both in the comments and in the rating.
You're talking about the connector or the quality?
The actual quality of the road, which I, it's my understanding that we have very little capacity as a township to do much about that. Am I mistaken? It's largely handled by the county and the state?
Most of the, most of the roads in the residential areas are, if they're not private, they're considered county roads.
Okay. I just wondered, because it did come up a lot, if it should be addressed here somehow, even if it's in something more of like an overall infrastructure. You know, we're talking about creating pedestrian traffic, but I would argue that while we do that, we would improve roads, so it might not be super hard to put it in.
No, it's not hard at all.
I second that.
Even with the, this coming from someone who lives in Holiday. But I just feel like that's something we heard a lot, and I'm trying to remember back of other things that, other issues, not things, other issues that people express concern about repeatedly, and that was the one that I remember coming up a bunch.
You know, he touches on it a little bit on page 16, but not very top.
16?
Touches on completing.
Right, the paser and all that.
What, improvements.
Right, but then, so these are the, okay, I guess I might be a little, you're confused on structure then.
No, you're, the cornerstone is, there's a cornerstone on focus on infrastructure improvement. One of those is storm, water, sewer, and roads like Snoop's.
Right.
But if, I don't have a problem putting it in under community assets worth enhancing because they are community assets, and based on the condition, we know that there, many of them are in disrepair. So, yeah, I don't have a problem adding a paragraph in there. Or if there's anywhere near capital improvements, you'd listen in there. It'll potential, it'll be in the back part of the action strategy.
So then, can I just ask a question about definition then? So you have the cornerstone. Are the cornerstone, if I was someone who was wondering what was going on in Acme, and I said, how do I find out what Acme's on about? Would I read the cornerstone?
You'd read the whole plan.
But, you're funny.
Only half hour.
Just not take me a half hour to read this, bad boy. Let me tell you that right now. So the assets, just define for me what the cornerstone's intent is and what the assets need.
The cornerstones are much like goals and objectives.
Okay.
Okay? The assets worth improving are kind of kicking it up a notch, saying that of all the stuff that we've talked about, here's something like a half a dozen really key things that we really need to focus our attention on in the future, the next five years or so, okay? So I mean, you know, a master plan is supposed to be a document that looks out 20 years and you update it every five. There's some things in here that you need to resolve like right away and really focus your attention on. Now, I changed the title because typically, when we started out, community assets worth enhancing was actually called issues worth resolving, okay? And I don't know if you want to go back to that, but I put community assets, you know, I looked at it and said, you know, these are community assets that are worth really enhancing and making better.
Well, some of them we don't even have yet.
Well, you have, in some degree, you do. I mean, you have the Township Hall and you have the Park Department.
Yeah, but we don't, we don't have connectivity with two things, one of which is, really there's nothing going on at.
These two?
And then.
But you, these are right here, Acme Village and the Grand Traverse Town Center are assets that you have. Now, they're not fully developed, but they are assets because they have vested development rights.
Okay. All right, touche.
I don't know, I think we should maybe talk about going back to the other, I mean, it's slanted kind of negatively, but it's more accurate, the title.
What, issues worth resolving?
Mm-hmm.
You do it either way. I looked at it and I thought, you know, I just kind of, those are issues, but then on the other hand, agriculture is not an issue, it's an asset that needs to be sustained and enhanced, okay? There are some communities that definitely have issues, but here you've got, like the parks are really an asset, ag's an asset. You've got assets here that you just, you need to better maximize or maintain, you know? Like ag, you want to make, you know, everybody wants to maintain the agricultural quality of the community.
Well, maybe it's two sections then. Maybe it's one thing that needs to be improved and one thing that's more about assets.
I think it all goes together. If we call them something that needs to be improved, you're automatically going to turn people off and think we're going to like raise their taxes and make a village. But if we just call them assets that we're enhancing, we're just looking at ways to come up with, you know, better solutions will already exist.
I'm sort of blowing smoke.
Well.
How about just community enhancements? You don't have to specifically say they're assets.
Right, that's almost misleading, that word.
What's assets?
Yeah.
Actually not, because under the.
But to a layman, it would be.
The assets makes me think of when we go through and we identify what's great about our township.
Right.
You know, like the exercise we did where we put all the stats on the map.
Correct, but, okay, I mean, I look at assets, community assets as being on a balance sheet. The community's got, you have a road system which is an asset, it's just not in good shape, okay? You have parks which are an asset that need to be improved, you have agricultural properties that are an asset that need to be sustained and enhanced with other regulations by allowing, you know, some other things to handle. So I look at assets more or less as a, as part of a community balance sheet. So I look at assets more or less as a, as part of a community balance sheet. Okay? Now, the federal accounting system requires that in your audits, that a community now has to inventory and estimate what its asset value is. And the asset value is just not cash. They require asset value for all the buildings, all roads that are owned by the community government. It's parks, it's anything. They want to see really what the true asset value of the community is. So, I mean, it's just, it's like your house. When you're doing a balance sheet for your home, for your own home income, you take the asset value of what you have in cash, stocks, whatever dividends, that type of thing. But you also look at what the asset value is of the property that comes into play. And that's kind of what this is, this is, these are community assets. I'm not adverse, it's really a planning commission decision. Planning commission wants to turn the title that differently. I just want to give you what, you know, what my, my take is on it. And if you want to change it, that's fine.
I just wouldn't call utilization of form-based codes, utilization of form-based codes then. Because that's not really identifying what community asset it is. I would say like improvement or revitalization of the commercial district. And then in the paragraph state that form-based code is going to be the option item that get that done. Ha ha! I don't know, things just roll off my tongue and I can't remember them.
Revitalization of the business.
There you go. Assuming everyone's vital. Anybody else? Any thoughts on different titles for that section or?
The first one, I haven't, the one which we excerpted right now. But I do have, I guess, a question under the connector, 22. And I don't know if it's appropriate or if it's even feasible. When I look at that route as a connector, I see that as an ultimate evacuation route. So if we have a problem on 72, it's an access point to get to Munson. And it really isn't mentioned here. And maybe appropriately isn't that since we're crossing wetland. But to me, that's what I see when I see that. If we've got a block right down here at 72 or 31, we can actually move people from Meyer to Munson without having to cross that intersection. That's worth a pencil.
Could we say something like, instead of assets worth enhancing, could we say something like township assets focus or township asset priorities?
I don't know, I guess. Yeah, just talk about it.
I think priorities does exactly what you were saying you'd like it to do. I say of all the things we want to do, these are the half dozen that are key.
You want to expand or improve on it, doesn't tell you that part of it. That enhancing does, right?
Right, because ag theoretically.
You want to say, call it like focused priorities? Or township, you want to just say township priorities?
That seems so easy to understand.
Yes, yeah.
Everybody in agreement?
I think so.
Getting nuts, that's going on. Yeah, okay, township areas, it is.
So you have your cornerstones and then you have the priorities, that makes a lot of sense. Okay? Good. Anybody else? You have a lot of notes here, Mr. Earl.
Just a few.
Any you'd like to share?
No, they're just, they're actually your notes for the Ron detailed land use map. Looking up more of these things.
All right, so I think now we want to go on to talk about the future land use map.
I want to show you what I think is a potential change after the day.
If everyone's prepared for that, we'll go.
I mean, it's not scary. Wait, before we go, were you, were you looking for some potential action on this part? I was looking for comments, yes. And if anybody's got anything that they want to give me, I'll take it back with me. I mean, Steve, if you want to, you know, if you've got some things that you want, you want to Xerox and give to me or?
Yeah, you can copy what I wrote down. See, I won't talk about like in the future, like the water and sewer and the comments on that.
Yeah. I'd like to see your comments on it, yeah. Maybe before you leave, we can run a copy.
Yeah, sure.
And then as far as this, it's not complete totally. So maybe at the next meeting, we would be seeing something entirely.
Something that looks like this.
Okay, put together, formatted.
Yes, I just.
Graphics inserted.
Yes, I wanted you to review the narrative.
Yeah, okay, all right. And then at that time, we would be recommending to the board they put it out for review. Is that correct?
If, if you're comfortable with what you see.
Okay. Just so everyone knows process.
Thanks for asking.
Because I can't even remember it after time.
No, you're right. When the planning commission is comfortable enough that they would like this available for public review, the planning commission would not adopt it. They would recommend to the board, trust me, that the board approve it for distribution. Which means that the plan would go to all of the adjacent communities and it would go to all of the agencies. And they may have 63 days to send you comments back. And it's like what we did when Elk Rapids gave us in the county. So there's a 60-day, 63-day review period. So technically, if you didn't do this until November, the board said, okay, in November, it would be November and December, you wouldn't get any comments back until after the first of the year.
Okay.
And then at that point in time, then you hold a public hearing.
Public hearing, and then we adopt it or we recommend to the board that they adopt it?
You adopt it unless the board decides to adopt it. But the board has to inform you that they want to basically adopt the plan.
Okay.
So far, the board has not said that.
Okay.
But the board would have to inform you of that.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, page five, second line.
Sure.
How many other?
Is this the half section?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The.
The triple A.
We have to insert that.
Is that page four?
We have to insert these. We have to run the analysis off of these.
Okay.
There's labs and X six.
Yeah. We start running those off in the final, for the final draft.
I have one last question about turning in the plan in the review process. This, if we get our review process done for the park plan first, do we have to wait to turn the park plan until it's adopted along with?
No, they're different, they're different than the review process.
Okay.
Okay, future land use map, here's the, here's the, this is the, this is the PDR map. Okay, it shows the properties that were approved for purchase and ones that are, have been offered for preservation. So these are the, this is the PDR map that was prepared by the conservancy for construction of the township. And then you will see the dash line is what was referred to as the agricultural preservation zone. That dash line then migrated right over here into this map because in order for state funding, and when the Department of Ag was giving out grants for the PDR program, there was an application that had to be submitted and the state wanted to make sure that the PDR, the eligibility areas were on the future land use map so they could see that areas that were, they would give money to buy the purchase and development rights were in effect areas that would be able to accommodate agricultural, or had agricultural property. Okay? So you don't see PDRs down here or up here. When you read the land use code for description for rural residential, part of it is these are areas that have large lot residential, but that are also used for agricultural farms and orchards. So that's why you have the PDR program. These properties within these dashed areas are eligible for PDR purchase and development.
Right.
Funding. And they, you can see that, how the farms, the ones that are listed, fall within that zone. Now, one of the recommendations I wanted to make to the planning commission was that you've got an area in here that is a big block of PDR eligibility, which is right here. And according to this map, this is either, these are areas that were subject to properties that have been offered for PBR, which are agricultural, which are orchards and ag property now. I was suggesting, my suggestion is that the ag, that we show these properties in here as agricultural instead of as rural residential. And I was also recommending that these areas, these fingers that are appearing here, that these areas eventually become urban, urban residential and fill in this, this green area, this area, and this area as urban residential. Because at least they'll eventually be areas that have, are subject to water and sewer. There they have sewer, but they have water. And it doesn't make sense that you have urban residential and then in the middle you have a rural residential in the future. This is a future land use map that this would be your urban residential areas and then these would be your pockets of ag. So my proposal is that ag would show up in this, this area right here, which is consistent with the PBR map in terms of the property owners that want to avail themselves of the PBR program in order to sustain the ordinance. So, I mean, that's, and I don't, that's why I said I don't want to mess around with this line because this line was, this took about, I don't know, Doug, are you involved in this? I think one of the narratives I saw, this took like nine months to.
It took close to a year.
Close to a year to get this line. And I don't want to, I don't want to mess with it. I want to, I want to honor the work that went into creating that line. And I just want to bring it over. It's on this map and then I just want to reinforce it. This, this area right here, which is already orchards. I'd like to show that in here is still being ag and not rural residential. Okay? So that's, that's the change. I'm suggesting ag here, and I'm suggesting here, here, and here, we go with urban residential along that, that area which is Bunker Hill to the south. And that's the only changes on the future land use map. Everything else pretty much stays the same. Does stay the same. The town center includes Acme Village, the Grand Travers Town Center right here, and then it includes the 60-plus acre parcel that is currently owned by Meyer, which was the old Lotner's Common. These, this is already zoned B3 for planned shopping. And you already know that these already have vested development rights for mixed-use development. Where'd you make up the town center? Any discussion on that?
Will that have any impact on property values in that area? Up or down or?
It shouldn't because the rural, the rural ag description in the future land use plan says it's an area that is, could either be agricultural or residential, large lot residential. The only reason why, Dan, I was looking at it was because those are, those parcels there are, is an indication, I think, is some of it Saylor's property?
Which one?
In here, Doug, John, is this some of John's property in here?
That's John.
Paul's.
Paul's.
Paul's. And he's expressed an interest in the PBR program.
So. Well, it just makes sense, especially from the infrastructure standpoint of water, sewer. If you look at Crossmore Resort, you know, we have an eight-inch water line went across 31 right there at the golf course and that go up or down. And that would be the limit. And then you loop around back and down south and around and have a nice loop system. And sanitary is all, goes to the south.
And one of the, one of the maps that you don't have here is the sanitary sewer map, which we more have in the master plan. We got it from the county TPW. But Steve's right, sanitary system is primarily to the south and along this way. Really, the bulk of it is down in this area and some of it's up and forgive. Nothing over here, this is still all, it's something. But it kind of then defines, it defines that, you know, this area is going to be primarily ag and then this area down here is primarily more, more developed with a town center.
Anybody else?
I have, I have a couple of questions. Okay, first of all, with these right here, I'm assuming the reason we left some of these rural residential was because of, I mean, right here you have the Vasa Trailhead. This is, which creek is this? This is Acme Creek. And so I would just be concerned about saying that we see that all as urban residential because I think we want the area surrounding Vasa and that to be like subdivision, like the edge.
Well, Vasa would stay as that dark green.
Right. I don't know, I just.
I think, if I'm not mistaken, I think this, this property right here is sold for development. And so you've got two large pieces here that, and you know, and then the way that the ordinance is set up, you always have the riparian buffers along the creek areas. Acme Creek is really this system right here.
Right, what do you think that's?
I don't know offhand what the name of that creek, that creek out there is. Anybody know what that creek is, that down here in the south, southwest portion? I could look it up. But Acme starts, Acme Creek starts here, and that way.
By changing it to urban residential, do we change the density that people can build within that area?
Yeah, we change the density. It would eventually go up to what you have in your, here's your zoning map. Your zoning map has a lot of this right now as all urban residential anyway. And it has this area right over here as forest and coastal district.
Which never made sense. Especially when the coastal district is mostly one family urban residential. Okay, that was my one question. My other question is in this area. I would reconsider the idea of having something as town center, more have like a mixed-use area and include some of this.